Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the July 7th, 2022 Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. If you would, please stand with us and Commissioner Futch will lead us in the invocation. Commissioner Caraway will lead us in the pledge.
Star heads. Father bless.
I pledge allegiance by United States of Public, standing one nation, under God, visible, with thee, justice for all.
Mr. Futch, I assume you put a lot of thought into that coming into the meeting tonight?
I always do. Keep it directed.
We do have a quorum tonight of three commissioners present. We do have Commissioner Dempsey is out due to COVID and Commissioner Wilder is out of town on a business trip, I do believe. Gentlemen, we've had a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting from June 16th. If there are no amendments, I need a motion for approval.
I've moved.
Do your second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion approved, the minutes passes 3-0. Gentlemen, you've also seen the agenda for tonight. If there are no amendments to that agenda, I need a motion for approval. Is submitted?
I've moved.
Do your second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 3-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commission's final action on July 19th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in these same chambers. You wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Catherine Weiss, who is new with the county tonight. Glad you're here for your first meeting and she'll provide a request to speak for them for you. We're less formal in this meeting. Our job is to allow the public an opportunity to voice their opinions either for or against any of the rezoning or variance requests we have in the public hearing section. We've also got a period at the end of the meeting for public comments. If you have something you'd like to say on the record for the commissioners to hear or someone else in the county to have, we'd like to give you three to five minutes. So if you're here representing a community, if you have a representative, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up and spend three to five minutes. If you happen to get repetitive with something we've heard previously, I'll ask you to yield the microphone so someone else has time for comment. That being said, we'll move straight into business tonight. Mr. Butler, got massage operator's license for Chloe Helen Roy.
Lieutenant Sheriff's, request for massage operator's license for Helen's helping hands at 4571 Cox Road, Suite B. For all permits besides services only. She meets all requirements of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of her request.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing. I need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve massage operator's license for Chloe Helen Roy, DBA Helen's. Forty-five seventy-one.
Do your second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 3-0. Ms. Montgomery, about a temporary use authorization.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a renewal of a temporary use authorization at 5193 Oak Springs Drive. This property is located on Oak Springs Drive off of Newman Town Road and is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural. A temporary use authorization was approved August 19th, 2021 for this property, so it will expire August 19th of this year. The applicant is requesting a renewal to allow them to continue utilizing the RV they have on the property for their residence until their house is built. If you look closely in that right-hand picture with the RV, you can see they've got the stakes in place for the proposed house footprint and they are working on getting building plans drawn up for that house and are just requesting the renewal for an additional year to complete that construction. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
Does the renewal start in August or is it?
Since it's a renewal, I think it would start from the date of the expiration.
And the applicant's aware will renew one time?
Yes, sir.
All right. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
I make a motion. Authorization acts matter. Parcel 011. Point two acres located at 5193.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved passes 3-0. Mr. Butler, we've got a plan revision file, RZ 220702.
That is correct. This is a plan revision for property over off of New Peersburg Drive. It was actually county-initiated. This is due from some previous mistakes from several years ago. We're going to clean it up this evening. Actually, it'll be cleaned up with board commissioners, but we'll talk about this evening as well. Currently zoned planning and development. Shows location of the three quadplexes. Also the current zoning of the property, which is planning and development. Also aerial view of the property itself. Existing site again showing the three quadplexes. And the plat of the property. So back in 1984, this is rezoned to PUD, planning and development. You had the quadplexes that we were talking about this evening. They also had some commercial tours at the time. That was New Peersburg Drive. And those were all constructed basically right after that zoning happened. Then in 87, there was a revision to these three parcels here to change those to professional. That was done then and no one really knew about it for a long time, it appears. In 2009, this property here was built as a quadplex. Again, we have no site plans on it. So we're not entirely sure that it's up to the standards of 1984, but we know that it was built in 2009. Then in the 2015, there is a zone verification letter issued for these two properties here. Basically stated that they could have quadplexes on them. There is some issues with old planning developments where they had, when they had multiple changes to the PUDs, they would put them all in one folder. So you could easily, over time, those could get shuffled around. I mean, they can, they can get pretty convoluted. So there's probably a reasonable explanation to how this got missed and probably these two as well. However, it was missed. They were allowed to build both of these in 2017, 2018. Then this year, there was a a zone verification letter request on that. These two property owners were made known to them that, yes, they simply do not meet the zoning in place. So a major revision will be required in order to remedy that issue. So that's what we're doing tonight. There is a condition with it. Basically reverts it. It's being very clear that it reverses back to 1984. You can go back to the site plan. So we do, we know for a fact that both of these were built to that 1984 setbacks. This one over here, we did not have a site plan on file for that. We 100% say it was. There is some likelihood that it doesn't meet the setback over here. Whoops. But again, it's one that we'll probably have to handle that at some point if something does happen to that property. In terms of future land use, this is within the mixed-use activity center, quadplex. Again, there are multiple quadplexes in Peersburg Square. But again, this use does fit within that. We're not really asking to change the use itself. We're just riding a wrong at this point. Staff does recommend approval of the request with a condition, again, making it very clear with which narrative they will follow, which is the one from 1984. And I conclude staff recommendation.
Okay, this, would this be considered a public hearing since?
So it's a public hearing. If someone wants to ask a question about it, they can. You may have the attorney we're dealing with, but.
I'm assuming Mr. Commissioner Dempsey's not here to defend himself, but since he was chair in this period, it's his fault that this.
We can blame it on him if we want to, but he's not here.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, the file RZ 220702, major PUD revision at 208, 210, and 12, New Peersburg Drive.
Do your second. Any discussion?
With, with, with condition?
That's it with.
Okay.
Speak up loudly. Step up to the microphone.
I'll get better.
All right, second still hold?
All right, all in favor? Motion to approve passes 3-0. Mr. Butler, let's enter into the public hearing section of the meeting. File RZ 220603, conditional use for a convenience store.
Yes, this is a request at 220 South Bel Air Road for property, C1 neighborhood commercial. This is, this stems from a request for a site plan. They're doing enough work to basically trigger all non-conformities on the site with it being zoned C1. There's a requirement for that to have a conditional use for the convenience store with gas pumps. Those location of the property on the east side of South Bel Air Road, right across from Plantation Road. Yeah, most property around it is zoned C1 or C2, and across the street you have some P1 and then some R2 as well. There's aerial view of the property. Existing site. We'll be dealing with this thing here in a moment. And also the plat of the property. And the overall site plan. Realistically, this has been there for quite some time. It meets the setbacks. We'll be dealing with this here. The building itself meets the setbacks. It's adjacent to other commercial properties. Really doesn't have any issues with, you know, part of the use provisions for a development like this or a use like this. Really stems on it having, or being next to residential. It's not the case in this situation. It's been there for a long time without any issues. Just staff has no concerns with that. There is a condition for building standards that we'll get to in a moment. In terms of future development, it is within a corridor. This is, this would be, this zoning classification would be within that, within that corridor itself if it were to come before us today for an actual C1 request. Again, no concerns there. Again, there is a condition with all work on existing new structures. This must be permitted to the Building Standards Department prior to starting work. Staff recommends approval with that condition.
Thank you, sir. And I just did have a severe thunderstorm warning come through. If for some reason we need to evacuate out of this room, we'll go through the doors over here into the back hallway behind the auditorium here. Shouldn't be a problem, but just wanted to say that. That's the SRS exposure I've had over the years coming out of me. We always start with a safety meeting, no matter if it's a Zoom meeting or what. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is anything you'd like to add to staff's presentation? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Make a motion to approve. File RZ 22. Additional use for convenience. Gas pumps.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved passes 3-0. Mr. Butler, we got the companion variance, file VA 220605.
That is correct. It's a variance to Section 90-147 G10B use provisions to allow for the existing gas pumps to remain on the property at 220 South Bel Air Road. Those location of the property, again, on the east side of South Bel Air Road. Currently zoned C1, had the C2, C1 around it, then P1 and R2 across the street. Aerial view of the property and also the existing site. Again, we're going to deal with this existing gas pump here, our gas pumps, excuse me. And also the plat of the property. And again, so one of the things with the use provisions, you do have a 25-foot setback for the actual pumps themselves from, from the right-of-way line here. The pumps in this drawing are at about 21 feet. Again, they've been in place for a while. So again, it doesn't really, could you move it? It's possible, but it doesn't really make a lot of sense to do that in this situation. Again, when the road was widened at some point, that was what, what made them get closer to the road. It's happened on, you know, on other properties in the county. Again, really no concerns with this from our standpoint. Again, there is a exact same condition for building standards that we'll see here in a moment. Other than that, staff recommends approval or with the condition, again, with requiring the permitting for all work on the, on the site. I conclude staff recommendation.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing, sir. Sir, if you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone else like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Make a motion to approve. File VA. Five variance.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 3-0. Mr. Butler, file RZ 220604, conditional use for tattoo.
Yes, this is a request at 4150 Washington Road, currently zoned C2, the conditional use for a tattoo parlor. Those location of the property based on the kind of south side of Washington Road. Again, currently zoned C2. Most property around it is also zoned C2. It does back up to some R2 here, but again, Reed Creek is running on the back of it, so really no, no concerns there. Across the street you do have some M1 as well. There's aerial view of the property. Also the existing site. The location will be within Bog Hair Salon here, you can see on this picture. And the plat of the property. So the request, with most tattoo parlors, you know, they are, they do have a conditional use for, for the zoning side of things. Really, the whole thing really hinges on the health department. In this situation, the health department has been, they've been working with the applicant throughout the whole process. They have no concerns with the request. This does stem from a complaint regarding the applicant themselves. They, they have a, they have a license to practice microblading, which is very similar to tattoo. There has been some discussion that there is a bit of a disconnect between microblading and then kind of progressing into tattoo because there is an additional requirement for tattoo from a zoning standpoint that is not really being conveyed to microblading professions. That's something we'll be talking with health department about trying to figure out a better way to kind of have that known to the folks that have this license. But again, no issues from the health department. Again, from a zoning standpoint, or a zoning C2, it's going within existing business. No concerns there from our, our side of things either. Staff recommends approval of the request for a conditional use for a tattoo parlor.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to, would you like to come forward and add anything to the record? Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, file RZ 220604, conditional tattoo at 4150 Washington Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved passes 3-0. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 220605, rezon R2 to P1.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning of the portion of the property at 460 North Bel Air Road from R2 Single Family Residential to P1 Professional. Property is located on the west side of North Bel Air Road, just past the intersection with Hereford Farm and Town Center Drive. And as you can see, it's currently split zoned with the majority of the property being zoned P1 Professional and the small section at the back of the property being zoned R2 Single Family Residential. Surrounding properties are a combination of commercial and a couple residential zonings. Shows the aerial of the site with the existing office buildings. And the plat, this was the plat that combined this portion of the property with the larger professional section. So this piece was originally part of the residential parcel and has been recently added to the professional piece and now is being requested to be rezoned to clean up the, the split zoning. We'll see a site plan in the moment, but the intention for this piece is a proposed playground area and walking trail with the Child Neurology Center that's planning to move into this property. This is the existing office building on Bel Air Road and the existing site from Marie Street with the existing house. In terms of future development map, this is in the Evans Activity Center. So the, the professional zoning is very much in keeping with the intent of this activity center. And of course cleans up the, the split zoning on the property and staff does recommend approval with the condition that if the site plan submittal is not otherwise required, the applicant is required to submit a plan to the planning department for the design of the play area and the required buffer to be sure that that buffer is in place before that play area is in use.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Mitch Slaughter, is anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
I make a motion to approve. File RZ 22. Five rezoning. Property.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved passes 3-0. Ms. Montgomery, the companion variance, file VA 220606.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to Section 90-139 regarding the buffers on the property at 460 North Bel Air Road. Same property we just looked at on the west side of North Bel Air Road and currently split zoned P1 and R2. The buffers are required where this property is adjacent to residential, so it's these three sides we're looking at. We don't need to worry about the, the north side of the property as, as far as buffers are concerned. On the aerial, you can see here the existing parking area does intrude into the required buffer area. It is nearly to the property line on that side. So we'll see that part of this request is to reduce the buffer to zero feet on that side of the parcel. And again, this is the existing office building on the site as well as a photograph of that drive aisle along that side property line where it does get very close to that side lot. Typically, the required buffer would be a minimum of 20-foot structural buffer, which would include a solid fence and then the 20 feet of landscaping. Kind of marked out there. The request is to reduce the buffer again to zero on this side to accommodate the existing drive aisle and parking area and to reduce the buffer to 10 feet on the, the kind of rear areas of the property where the new playground and walking trail are proposed. This is the plan for the site showing that play area and the walking trail around it. The, the request for the reduced buffer is to provide additional space for this play area and walking trail just to allow them to utilize more of the site for this purpose. Since the intent of a buffer is to, to basically make sure that this type of use doesn't impact the adjacent residences. But since this particular use is associated with a professional business, it's most likely going to be in use during business hours and is, is unlikely to cause an undue impact to the neighboring residences. Staff does not have any particular concerns with this reduction. We do have the same proposed condition to make sure that that site plan is reviewed and that buffer is installed before the playground is in use. And so the recommendation is approval with that condition.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Slaughter, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Motion to approve. File VA 22-06.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 3-0. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you. File VA 220603, variance to Section 90-98.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to Section 90-98, the list of lot and structure requirements at 1808 Lunderen-Hoom Road. This is the location of the property on the west side of Lunderen-Hoom. And currently zoned M1. The M1 zoning was approved in 2020 along with a variance to the buffers on two sides of the property. You can see the surrounding properties are all primarily zoned residential agricultural with additional industrial zoning closer to I-20. This is the aerial of the site. The subject property is currently undeveloped. You can see the adjacent property is currently a DOT laydown yard, so although it is zoned residential agricultural, it is very much not in residential use. It's in much more of an industrial type of use. This is the existing site. In 2020, this was the conceptual plan presented and based on this variance to the buffers has, was already approved with that rezoning to reduce the buffer to 10 feet along the south and west property lines. That allowed the driveway to encroach into that buffer area. Based on this concept plan, a setback variance was not requested at that time. The argument for this and for staff's support of this request was the essentially industrial use of the adjacent property. If that property was actually zoned for the industrial use, we would be looking at three-foot setbacks and no buffer requirements. So the, the 10-foot buffer was more than sufficient in, in staff's opinion. Similarly, with the setbacks, with it currently being adjacent to residentially zoned property, the required setbacks are 30 feet. The request is to reduce them to 10 feet on the west and south property lines. This puts the setback and the buffer identical to each other and allows them to develop their site plan as currently proposed. So this is the new plan now that they've gotten through kind of the engineering and are actually working towards construction. And staff is recommending approval with the condition that the building setback is reduced to 10 feet along only the southern and western property lines where it's adjacent to that DOT laydown yard.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve with conditions to postpone or to, or to deny.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA 22063, variance setbacks, 1808 Lunderen-Hoom Road.
Conditions. Okay, did you? Okay. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Why the step up there?
I just got, I just got excited. Do your second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 3-0. Ms. Mystery, file VA 220604, 683 Commerce Court.
Yes, so this is a variance application for 683 Commerce Court on 2.94 acres as a portion of the larger parcel. Current zoning is M2 general industrial and the request is a variance to 9098 for set, front setback requirements. Here's the location showing the, in red, which is the parcel that's, part of the parcel that's undeveloped. This is the M2 zoning and it is basically surrounded by M2 and then R2 on the other side of the railroad lines. Here's a close-up of the aerial. So the larger parcel has the industrial building developed here. The new parcel will have a industrial building developed here. Here's a plat of the property. And these are the site views. Shows the first one where the building, the new building will be. And the bottom photograph is just the view across from the site. Another site photograph. And this is the concept plan. So the road does end in a cul-de-sac at the end of the, where the property is. The first structure here was built in 94 and the code section for Evans Town Center was adopted in 2000. So the front setback there for that building is approximately 135 feet. For the new building, there will be a shared driveway in between the two and the request is to remove the front setback requirement. The minimum setback requirement is five feet and the maximum is 55, so the proposed layout wouldn't work for that and that's why the request is here. Staff is recommending approval with a condition to submittal and approval of the proposed subdivision shall be required prior to the site plan submittal or within 30 days of the board of commissioners' approval, whichever is the only estate. Copy of the recorded plat should be provided to the planning department.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Mr. Colkey, would you like to add anything to the presentation? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
File VA. Variance to waive the maximum front setback at 68.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 3-0. Mr. Butler, file RZ 220701, rezon RA to S1.
Lieutenant Sheriff's, request for a rezoning to S1 for proposed water tower and office space at 5221 Parham Road. Currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural. The request you probably saw on there is for the city of Grove Town. So before, we were talking about on Lunderen-Hoom, you had GDOT owns a property that was the south of that property. Zoned RA. So one of the things within county code that's a little interesting. The county, the state, BOE, beds, all those guys, they'll have to buy by zoning. However, the two cities that they own property outside of their boundaries have to buy by zoning, so that's why they're here tonight, to have a look at this. Shows the location of the property on the north side of Parham Road. And the zoning of the property, then currently zoned RA. You do have some S1 and CC further down Parham Road. And again, aerial view of the property. And the existing site. Also the plat of the property. The request this evening is for a proposed 750,000 gallon water tank, which will be about 100 feet high when it is constructed. They will remove the building there and they will reuse this existing building back there for a water distribution office. And they also have a proposed gravel parking lot here and also with entrance gate and also fencing around the area of the site that will be developed. Overall, with a request like this, staff really, doesn't have too many concerns, but there is a concern with the water tower itself. It's one of those, you can't really hide 100-foot-high water tower. You can't make it invisible. We do have some concern about this buffer here on this property. It's one that if this were to, were to come before us from a private developer, perhaps, we're looking at probably at least a 30-foot structural buffer for that. Again, it's not going to hide this, but it will help to at least soften it or over time, at least provide some. at least provide some measure of breaking it up. So again, we are, we have a condition proposing that. In terms of the future development map, this is within the rural neighborhoods area of the county. One of the things with that does have civic uses and also government uses. Again, a water tower, it's simply going to be a government use. It does provide water for a large, or will provide water for a large area with this part of the county. Grove Town is here, they can kind of discuss some of their water plans if there are questions about that. But due to those factors, staff does recommend approval with the condition, again, requiring a minimum of thirty-foot structural buffer on the eastern and western property lines. Again, allowing, does allow chain link. Again, it's one of those, more for security than anything. But again, that'll be required at the, when the development plan comes in.
Is there anything in code that addresses antenna arrays and leasing space for antenna arrays?
For a water tower, the height of that is exempt from it. Now, the area, the like, telecommunications on top of that. You probably, I mean, what are you talking about? Do you want one that's-
Just whether it's cell phone or government use, I mean, is Sheriff Will gonna expand his, his radio network, you know, try to boost it? I mean, are there plans for different arrays?
About that. Again, could you? Yes, it's possible.
Okay.
Typically, those aren't, if they extend above the top of the tower, they're, you know, a couple feet, not typically twenty or thirty or forty feet more than the tower.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Kurtz? You're going to speak for the applicant? All right, yes, ma'am. We'll let you come up. We always let the applicant go first.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here before you all tonight. My name is Ronnie Kurtz. I am the Director of Planning and Community Development with the City of Grove Town and I'm accompanied by our Assistant City Administrator, Mr. Bradley Smith, who I might add is making his first public appearance since welcoming a happy, healthy baby new girl into the world.
Congratulations.
Thanks for making it out. I just wanted to state that we have been in communication with the county throughout the inception of this project to the current date about any concerns that have been coming up and are certainly in full support of all of the conditions that they have proposed for this project. As a government entity ourselves, we are highly cognizant of the need to be accommodated and responsive to any citizens' concerns about such projects as we try to balance those with the need to provide ever-improving services to our growing community. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you all or anybody in the crowd may have.
What, what kind of capacity will this add?
So we're looking at seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons of water that we would be looking at adding and it's not necessarily that we're looking at providing water to more people. It's that it's taking the load off of the existing water infrastructure for what is currently already planned to go online.
And will that help with pressure issues as well or?
Sure.
All right, gentlemen?
So this is again, just a conceptual idea of where it would be. In theory, with a water tower, you want to have it as high as possible, so we would try to have it at the highest point on that lot in the area that is, you know, looking at other considerations as well. And I think another thing about it is that that is the most accommodative of the gravel driveway and the existing building that we're planning on reusing. We're not wedded to saying that that upper right-hand corner is exactly where the water tower would be. This has yet to gone through a full engineering review.
I'd say the engineers will decide where it goes.
And, and the theory is to put it in the, again, the highest place on the lot that is amenable to the other restrictions.
I would assume this would be something akin to dealing with Verizon or T-Mobile. If, if you wanted to put it somewhere else, you'd have to have an engineering study proving that it was a better location.
And typically, you're not going to put those type of situations, same with water tower, you're not going to put it in the hole, you're going to put it in the high point where you get the most pressure on it. Right. I like it, but I won't tell you they put it where I, where I didn't want it to go and I'm okay with it now because they've hidden it pretty well. I just can imagine.
Now, are we, if we have any questions for Mr. Kurtz, are we going to let him answer those here or does he need to set up, set up a separate meeting to meet with anybody with concerns or both?
Yeah, I think you certainly take the public comment and then if there's any questions that can easily be resolved, part of the deliberations, I think you probably have them come back up and not answer those questions. There may be issues and concerns that may be handled best offline with the City of Grove Town and the neighbors if that's the case, but I think we kind of play that by ear and see what the public comment is.
Right, thanks, sir. Thanks, sir, I appreciate it. We may call you back up. Yes, ma'am, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
I've been living on Parham Road almost twenty-six years.
What's your name and home address?
My name is Brenda Cooter.
Okay, and what's your home address?
And I've been living on Parham Road almost twenty-six years. It was a dirt road when we moved there. Now the cars go at seventy-five miles an hour plus. Okay, now they want to put a hundred-foot water tower, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons of water that would deplete all of our wells that we use. And we're not in the city limits, we're in the county. They want to put the water tower and it's going to take away from our property value too. I don't think it's fair for the residents of Parham Road to have something pushed on us like that because we live in rural area in the county, the city's coming in there to do this. They might need another water tower, but they don't need it in the county.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm concerned about the wells. I'm concerned about my property value and those, who wants to get up in the morning and look out and see a big old water tower?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kurtz, that begs question, how do you fill a water tank? You pull it out of the, out of city water or do you pump it out of the ground? Yes, sir. Please, please give us your name and home address for the record.
My name is Bradley Smith. I live at fourteen-twenty Dunwoody Place in Apling, Georgia. So the concerns about the well, surrounding wells, we will not be drawing water from the area. We will be drawing water from existing taps that we have with Columbia County. Columbia County currently provides roughly ninety-five to ninety-seven percent of the water that the citizens of Grove Town utilize. So we are not drilling any additional wells. This is merely a storage facility to assist with future growth in the south and southwestern corridors of Grove Town as well as fixing the eastern side of Grove Town has pressure issues. So we're hoping that this will help with that.
I'm assuming Columbia County has the capacity to support an addition like this?
I feel like Mr. Gordon would be more than happy to provide additional water.
We have, we have met with Mr. Gordon as well to determine, to make sure they had the additional capacity as well as Mr. Modano and both feel that there should be no effect. Of course, filling a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-gallon tank, you know, that's a pretty big payday when we fill it the first time.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, give us your name and home address. Yes, sir. If I could, would you, would you mind starting over here with Mr. Sterling? Thank you. He can make sure he's got one for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Larry Jernigan. I reside at fifty-two-twenty-five Parham Road, which would be right next door to this water tank. I retired from Columbia County Water with thirty years of service. I was a Class-One operator in the, in the county and a laboratory technician in our service, my service for the county. I authored the first emergency response program for facilities which use chlorine gas for disinfection. It's included identifying and establishing the kill zone boundaries in the neighboring neighborhoods. Also authored the first initial stormwater processes in the county along with the reporting to the Environmental Protection Division. So I have a, a long history with water treatment and cross-trained in potable water and drinking water in my career. I have several concerns about this and objecting to this proposed zoning change. The first, I feel that allowing Grove Town to establish this proposed operational office and water tower sets precedence which could become harmful to other areas by establishing satellite municipal operations throughout Columbia County. I believe that Grove Town engaged in speculative buying when they purchased the property with their supposed transparency in the government. I must note that nobody spoke to anybody on Parham Road that I have talked to and I've talked to all of my neighbors except one and he was out of town on vacation. To my knowledge, there's been no percolation test performed on the property. Also, to my knowledge, there has been no compaction test ran at the time on the site. And the requirements for a foundation and the design in choosing the place to put a water treat, a water tank is very important. Engineers must complete detailed geometrical investigations to understand the underlying soil properties and the potential size. Should it become necessary for them to drill and pour cement for pylons, I'm concerned about aquifer, as the lady said earlier, that supplies our wells on Parham Road. The weight of the water alone within that tower is six-million-two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-and-five-hundred pounds. That's not including the tank, that's just the water weight that would be suspended a hundred feet in the air. I believe personally that Grove Town at some point in time has the intention of annexing our property into the city. Why else would they go outside the city to build a water storage tank? Liberty Hills and all those folks have county water and city water. There wouldn't be any real theory to build a water tank that far over in the county. Grove Town has no property that adjoins that property and to get the water to it, they're going to have to put in water mains, which means they will probably have to put in a water pumping station to either get the water to fill the tank or to take the water from the tank. Which brings up another problem of, of noise from pumps and pump stations. Also, the vibration from the tanks when you fill them up. The people that live next to water tanks say that there's a reverberating noise that's pretty annoying and usually late in the evening when they fill the tanks and you can't go outside and enjoy yourself in your yard. The likelihood of the tank falling might impact us and I understand that I don't know if there's an ability that our insurance company will cover our homes should something catastrophic happen to that tank. In the city's narrative, they indicated there would be no more than eight people on the property at one time. My thirty years experience in water treatment seems to lend me to think that I shouldn't be as naive to just to believe that.
Mr. Jernigan, I might have to ask you to close. So you've hit your five-minute limit.
Over, I've got so much more.
Yes, sir, I understand.
In the narrative that the board is recommending and whatnot, they mentioned the, the things that are in that two, twenty-thirty-five plan that the county has and that the schools and county services, but nowhere in that plan did I read that they expected Grove Town to supply services outside of the limits of Grove Town. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Mr. Kurtz, do you have anything that you'd like to, to add for the record? That Mr. Jernigan raised any of the questions with compaction, soil quality, that kind of thing?
So in regards to the engineering that would be done, we have been assured by the city engineer that any tank that we would install here would be designed and erected in full accordance with the American Water Works Association standards and there would furthermore be a geotechnical report done to assist with the foundation design and that it would be certified to be able to handle the weight of the structure, the weight of the water within the tank and winds not to exceed a hundred miles per hour in addition to other constraints as well. Furthermore, I would speak to the concept of this being a gateway to annexation. The city has no intention and in fact makes it a policy to not forcibly annex any property in any way, shape or form and that is in no part of the consideration that went into this.
Someone would have to want to be annexed, you couldn't-
That is how we operate, yes, sir.
If, if say the, the site was not judged to be a feasible site, is the city prepared to walk away from it?
I would, absolutely.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Not that I'm aware of, is that something you'd be?
I can say, I know Mr. Jernigan fairly well and I can, I can, what I can tell you is I have one beside me. I didn't like it. Same reasons. Press, but there, now that it's there, I don't, and it didn't provide me water either, by the way. And it was almost simultaneously. Now that it's there and the county did work trying to hide it as much as possible, my, my only, my thought is is to work with them and try to, try to disguise it as much as possible. The insurance question, I'd say it's not an insurance worry about, but, and then, does Parham Road not have city water? Is that in the plans at all to give them that?
So if we were to run a water main down the Parham Road, which we would, he is right, we would have to run a main to the tower. Anyone that's along the line that we are running, we have already decided that we would allow them to tap on if they elect. Again, we are not, we're not interfering with anybody's wells, we're not drilling any additional to take water from that area. If they elect to, to tap on, we have already decided and been blessed by council to say that they would receive a free water tap. Now they would have to run the line to the, to the actual street, but then we would give them the tap if they elect, but we, we can't force any of them to attach to our water line because they're not inside the city.
But they will be getting water, which will actually-
If they elect.
Right, if they, right, there's water there, whether they elect to do it or not, there'll always be a line there, so you got the, that's a plus, but back to the, to the, where the location is not set on this location.
Not this specific, where this, again, this was a conceptual drawing. Okay. I mean, but this area right here is the highest on that property. So it would be somewhere in that square most likely. Now, again, we're going to follow the thirty foot, we, we adopted the thirty-foot setbacks, we were okay with that. But to put it anywhere near the back, back here anywhere, that's a low area. That, there's a, there's a drop-off on this property right there. So for the construction of a water tower, it makes sense for it to be at the highest point, which is what Ronnie alluded to earlier. So ideally, this will most likely be the location that we would choose if approved. Moving it further back, we have to look at construction, we have to have to build the tower taller. So the further down we go, the taller the tower needs to be for pressure.
All right. Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? No, ma'am, you've already had your one opportunity. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions. File RZ-two-two-zero-seven-one, zoning from RA to S-one at twenty-one Parham Road.
Do a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes three-zero. Ms. Mystery, file RZ-two-two-zero-seven- Ms. Mystery, file RZ 220703, R3 to C1.
Yes, sir, this is a rezoning at 424 Vaughan Road on 6.651 acres, and the current zoning is R3, single-family residential, and the request is for C1 neighborhood commercial. Here's the location on the south side of Vaughan Road. Zoning is R3, and either side is C1 and C2, and also some P1 across the street, and it's near, at the future's very commercial center. Here's an aerial of the site, and a photograph of the existing building, which is a vacant duplex at the moment. Here's a plot of the property, and this is a concept plan that the applicant has submitted with the rezoning. With the commercial zonings on either side, there won't be any buffers required, there will be a buffer required on the rear of the property line adjacent to the residential. The applicant has explained that they would most likely have two tenants in the building. They might renovate the existing building or demolish it and build a new one, there'll be a parking lot on the front, and then there's possibly a separation fence if that's what the tenants want. Here's a concept elevation that would be the view along Vaughan Road. And one of the comments that we got from the utility department is that the existing sewer ends where this green circle is up here, which was put in when these homes were built, so there is no sewer available at the current location unless the developer extends the sewer to that point. So, the health departments have also mentioned that there'll be limited retail uses on this For the future development map, this is in the neighborhood's character area, which is for residential, but with the commercial already being on both sides of the property, it makes more sense for this one to be commercial, and it is adjacent to the Abastin Road Activities Center, which allows similar commercial uses as well. So, staff is recommending approval with a condition that the development shall follow the design standards for 90-99 corridor protection overlay district, and the only septic report, the information that the health department has on this property is a repair permit that was issued in 1990. There's no record of an existing system or the final inspection for the repair, so whatever the septic tank might be in the ground can't be utilized. A level-three soil report will be required on this property, and if suitable for a septic system, uses will be limited to office space and minimum retail, and the use actually will be dependent upon the soil.
All right, thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, is there anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? This rezoning?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, we're not gonna do this.
Do you have, do you have anything to say about this particular rezoning? If, no, ma'am, I'm not gonna allow it, he's a city representative, don't care, we're done, we're done with that issue. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to add or make a public comment about rezoning Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone, that will be approved with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ 220703, rezoning from R3 to C1 at 424 Vaughan Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve? Vote. Passes 3-0. Last item of the evening, file RZ 220704, rezone residential agricultural to PRD. The applicant has asked for a postponement to 8/18, August 18 of 2022. However, we'll let him make his presentation, we'll open the floor for any comments, as this has been advertised. I would suggest that you withhold your comments because we don't know what he's gonna bring back to us after the postponement, but if you do have something you'd like to get on the record, we'll be more than glad to let you come up and make those statements, and then we'll, again, reconvene that public hearing if we go through with the postponement as requested. So, that being said, Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 220704.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to PRD Planned Residential Development of four, two properties off Clanton Road and Old Perry Place. This is the location of the properties involved, Clanton Road here, so very small frontage there, and then Old Perry Place extending back along the eastern edge of the properties. And the properties are currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural, as are the majority of the immediately surrounding properties. There is the S1 for the church to the south, and other developments along William Few are zoned planned unit development and R2, single-family residential for other neighborhoods. This is the aerial of the site, largely undeveloped, there is an existing house on a portion of the property. And the existing site, this is from Clanton Road, and you can see Old Perry Place heading off to the left. These are both unpaved roads, Clanton Road is a public road while Old Perry Place is private. Part of the development would include paving Clanton Road, the public road access to this property. Since this is a PRD, the concept plan is being reviewed as part of this rezoning, as there is an existing conditions map submitted as part of this that shows the existing environmental features on the property as well as the topography of the site. And in terms of the conceptual plan, this is a single-family residential development. The applicant is proposing to restrict it for an active adult-type project, that would be done through covenants or deed restrictions, not through the county and the zoning. So, in terms of kind of the use, we are reviewing it as a single-family neighborhood. The maximum density proposed is 210 units, that's about 1.95 units per acre. The current concept plan is a little bit below that, and it is providing about 50% of the property remaining is open space, and the narrative does commit to that 50% as the minimum amount of open space to remain on the site. In terms of the lots themselves, there are two lot sizes proposed, 60-foot lots and 55-foot lots, and then the 55-foot lots are further divided up into kind of traditional front access, and then several, a proportion of them that are alley access, which are shown in kind of the blue color, so this would be the alley access, for example, for that set of lots. There are two sets of setbacks proposed with this, so the 60-foot lots have 10-foot setbacks, these are the larger lots here, and then the 55-foot lots would have seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks from the side property lines. In terms of kind of the amenities and the character of the subdivision, the amenities include community garden space, pickleball courts, gazebo, walking trails, and the several park spaces as well up here. This is a little bit different amenity package than what we see in some of our typical neighborhoods, but the PRD is intended to encourage creativity and a little bit different style of development, so that is actually kind of encouraging to see. The applicant is also proposing a little bit of a different landscape treatment with these landscape impact areas along the main road. There'd be a section of the lots that would have additional landscaping beyond just the street trees that are required in the PRD, would give it a little bit different character and feel to the development as you drive through. The applicant is also proposing a structured drainage system as part of the justification for the request for seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks as opposed to the 10-foot that are typically required in a PRD. So, this is examples of how that drainage system would work with gutters and such tying into the structured storm system and tying into the pipes to address any runoff issues that may come about on the property. In terms of the future development map, this property is located in the neighborhood's character area, which is intended to provide for the development of single-family subdivisions. PRDs and PUDs can include townhouses in this character area, although the current application does not request them. In terms of density, typically, we're looking at projects up to three units per acre, 1.95, this project is within that target density. And staff is recommending approval with several conditions, although, as noted, the applicant has requested to postpone this request.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, Mr. Lawrence, I know you're the applicant, is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation?
Keith Lawrence, 211 Dixon Court, Evans, Georgia, 30809. Yeah, we're requesting, can you bring up the concept plan for me? Perfect, that's perfect. You know, we've been working with staff for probably on and off for about a year, and, you know, had a meeting a couple days ago with some of the residents of Kioki Ridge, and also got some feedback from some board of commissioners about some concerns on setbacks, the percentage of 10-foot versus seven-and-a-half, you know, and so we are looking at what, you know, kind of have a meeting in the next two, three weeks to kind of look at this area, and also, one of the questions, one of the ladies asked, was there a way to increase the buffer? What we've done on here, it's kind of hard to see, but it's that line right through there is 100-foot buffer off of the property line. We've tried to be as respectful as we can with the adjoining landowners on that side, but we feel like we got a few tweaks we want to go through here and make sure that we can get everything as many people satisfied with this plan as possible. We posted some signs out there in Kioki Ridge and on Clanton Road to make sure we got as much comment as we could, and I have gotten some, I think we had about 12 or 15, and I had a couple calls after the meeting, some people were out of town and stuff, so I think it would give us some more time, and also, I'd like to present the final plan that we can kind of agree to on that, so I'd request that we postpone it, and I hate that we've had the people come out, I did try to reach as many as possible because I took signs back out today as well, as well as reached out to people of Kioki Ridge, Mr. Wheatley, and some other people as well, to try to let them know that we were requesting to postpone, so I know there's people not here, including Marlena, who was on there, so I'd like to make sure that they all had a chance to comment on that when we do the final presentation.
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to withhold the conversation while we're, ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to hold your conversation until the meeting's over, please, thank you. Is this an accurate depiction of the water on the property?
Yeah, I'm gonna put an X, that's a detention pond, that's a detention pond, that's a detention pond, but the blue is actually the wetlands on there, so this is actually the wetlands limits, that's actually not flowing water, there is some in the creek, but that whole limit right there would actually be wetlands.
Okay.
And state waters inside that area.
Right, thank you.
We think it's a great project, but we just want to try to get it as good as we can before we bring it to you guys for your serious consideration.
Five-foot side setbacks being pulled out entirely?
No, five-foot setbacks, yeah. Really, the question comes in is, can we satisfy everybody at least on a percentage, a higher percentage of the 10-foot, that's what we're trying to see right now, and then again, like I mentioned, is there a way, I think there's a concern on where it was on this side right here, is there a way for us to pull it a little further, and so I was looking at that, I've been working on that as well.
You know, I've heard, I've heard the number of 10,000 square feet being thrown at that, we R2 as opposed to PRD.
Correct.
Could you tell me the difference between PRD and R2?
Well, R2 is a traditional zoning district, so you're gonna have dimensional standards that are absolutes, you know, as you indicated, 10,000 square foot lot area, you're gonna have a minimum lot width. With PRD, you're looking at more of a flexible zoning classification where you, you know, with justification can have maybe perhaps smaller lot sizes than you would in a traditional zoning district, whether it's an R2, an R1, what have you, but you're providing benefit for maybe these more unique designs, you're taking into cases in similar maybe to a project like this, where you have topo, or you have environmentally sensitive areas that otherwise, you know, in a traditional district, you may be able to impact more than you would if you went in a creative route, and PRD is our, sort of our residential-only creative zoning district, if you will.
So, it allows flexibility.
It does allow.
More flexibility with a site.
And not just with lot sizes and unit types, but also with, you know, road cross-sections, you know, we can be a little more creative in that.
R2 allows cul-de-sacs, PRD doesn't? If I remember correctly?
They both, they both can.
Now, I thought when we wrote PRD, we tried to stay away from cul-de-sacs.
We do, where it's possible, I think, you know, in this type of a scenario here, you know, is there a loop road opportunity? I mean, I think that's certainly up for debate, but again, looking at the way this property is laid out, you got really one way in and out, so a true loop road is not realistic, but however, I mean, he's done some of that here in the middle, and, you know, maybe the question is out there on the end. And he really has provided that with just alley returns, if you will.
And there are a number of developments that have, that are called PUDs, but those have commercial aspects to them.
Yeah, planned unit development is when you have a mix of residential and commercial, planned residential development or PRD is residential only.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, I seem to recall you're gonna build a personal residence close to this, could you indicate on the map where that's gonna be?
Right there, right on the end of that corner right there. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a beaut, Kioki Ridge is a beautiful neighborhood, you know, I wouldn't build in there and have this next to me if I thought it was gonna, anyway, be negative impact. I'll go into a lot more detail next time, but I mean, these homes will be basically 360, 375 and up, and I think that with some of the structured drainage we've got, I think, and giving you guys a detailed scene, I can't take credit for the, you know, the landscape impact zones, that was Danielle's idea during an early meeting, probably six months ago, she suggested, I think it's a great idea. We've really tried to cover all the bases to deliver the, you know, a gold star community for Columbia County, it's just, we just gotta figure out what's gonna be enough on that side, because I think this has probably got the most complete package for you that I've ever done, at least on that side, so we're gonna, we're gonna go back and see what else we can do.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and if there's anybody that would like to add something for the record, just based on the information you have tonight, feel free, yes, ma'am, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name is Beth Cornell, I live at 2538 Falling Branch Lane, Evans, Georgia, 30809. I am in Kioki Ridge subdivision, so I did participate in the public meeting or the information meeting that was held on Tuesday. I know this is gonna be stayed, but I would like to have the opportunity to work with the developer to see if we can make some changes. We are right in this area, so we are probably.
You all are gonna be neighbors.
Yes, we will be neighbors, so I would like to try to keep things in a good footing. I do have a lot of concerns in here, for example, 51% of these smaller, smaller units are all located in the narrowest part of this property, it's also the closest to the wetlands area, the floodplain, so I have a lot of concerns about that.
Those would be the highest-dollar lots, if I know, Mr. Lawrence.
They may be, but, you know.
Don't they overlook a hardwood bottom?
It is, it's a hardwood, it's gorgeous, it's my backyard, so yes, I'm very passionate about this. I do have a lot of concerns, I do think that, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to try to make some changes here. These lot sizes are extremely small, one thing I have an issue with, and I spoke to the gentleman about it, you know, the Falling Branch is not even represented here on this drawing, so you don't even know, this looks like an entire big parcel of property, but it's not. There's a road that goes down here, and there are four homes that are most impacted back on this backside that are not even shown on these drawings, so I wanted that to go on the record. I don't know that it was considered, you know, what the impact was on here, I noticed that for the folks on Kahaba Creek, they're given about a 200-yard buffer before they get to the first of the lots, but the Falling Branch folks are not, we, in fact, a couple of the lots encroach within that 100-foot proposed buffer, so I do know this is being tabled, it'll come back up, I would like the opportunity, but I wanted to get some of the concerns on the record.
Sure, Mr. Lawrence will be glad to talk to you.
Oh.
Okay, is there, thank you, ma'am, appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone until August 18, 2022.
Chairman, I make a, RZ 220704, rezoning from Vaughan Road to August 18.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to postpone until August 18 passes 3-0.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick on that, we will reopen a public hearing at that time, so there'll be another opportunity to speak on this.
Will we re-advertise, will we put new stickers up on the signs?
We will certainly put new stickers up on the signs to give the indication of when that next meeting is, as indicated.
And I know Mr. Lawrence will work with the residents, he'll probably have at least one meeting with residents, if not more.
Yeah, and we'll put our, we'll put stickers back on the signs we have out.
Thank you very much. We have no legal matters, do we have any staff or commissioner comments? All right, thank you, do we have any public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Yes, ma'am, please. Yes, ma'am, please. Sorry, I missed you. I wanted to get, get out of here before we get rained again.
Do I need to say my name again?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Beth Connel, 2538 Falling Branch Lane. I didn't bring this up on the particular track because I think this is your comment. In this particular instance, and it's no fault for the planners and developers, these signs were posted on Clanton Road, which is a dirt road, which most people do not travel up and down, but it does directly impact Kiawke Ridge. So I guess I'm making a request to the county is that when another subdivision is significantly impacted, like as adjacent landowners, is there an opportunity to please post a sign at the entrance?
What's the code on something like that? I'm not...
On, on the properties, so in this case, on the, this property faces Clanton Road and Old...
Old Perry.
Perry Place, yeah, I was going to call Pierre, but Perry. So we would put them on those. We do post these on, the application is in entirety, everything that Mr. Lawrence has submitted with regards to the plans and the application and all that stuff is posted on our website, and we do that when the application comes in, so there's always an opportunity to check the county website, and we have an interactive map. It actually shows not only what they're proposing to do and all the information that goes with it, but what dates it'll be on, if it's, in this case, a public hearing, it'll be on the planning commission, so it'll have tonight's date, and then also the proposed or the expected date of board of commissioners. Now, both of those will adjust with tonight's action, so it'll remain on the county, on that website until action is taken and then moved forward, and then ultimately decided one way or the other. So there's that. It has been in the papers.
But if, if, if you've got something that's on a secondary, less-traveled road like this, and it impacts surrounding property...
Don't add additional signs in subdivisions, you know, like for example, in Kiawke Ridge around the corner, or even in Whispering Pines or anything of this sort.
You know, what I would suggest is to talk to your commissioner and get them to make some kind of a recommendation, because we, we can talk about it, they can do it.
Okay.
We're just a recommending body here, but if, if you have, we've had that complaint before, and we've talked about some strategies where we do digital advertising, where we actually serve ads into areas, but, you know, they won't give us the budget to do things like that.
Okay.
So, so again, I would say to, to talk to one or more of the commissioners, to call Doug Duncan, and who's, who's your commissioner? Gary Richardson?
Gary Richardson.
Okay, I'd talk to Gary and see if he could say something. He used to be on planning. He was my vice chair for, for a couple of years, so...
I'll do that.
He's, he's very familiar.
Helpful. I know a lot of people in our neighborhood didn't even find out about it until it kind of got posted on Facebook.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Do agree, that's why we posted, that's why we posted our own signs, to try to cover. We put it Whispering Pines entrance coming in and out of Kiawke Ridge, and then on Clanton Road as well, because we didn't want there to be any question that there was, you know, wasn't clearly visible on that side, so on that. But I do agree.
Appreciate it. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Do you hear a second? Question? All in favor? Both to adjourn, 7:13 PM, next meeting, July the 21st, 6:00 PM in these chambers. Thank you for coming out.
Go close to me, lay on it.